Good evening and welcome to the City Council Joint Study Session with the Tax Increment Finance Statutory Review Committee, the TIF Oversight Committee for TIF Number Two, the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board, the Norman Forward Senior Ad Hoc Group, Park Board and Representatives from the YMCA, Sooner Swim Club, Norman Public Schools, Norman Regional Hospital, and the Multi-Sport Facility. And I noticed we also have representatives from the Chamber and from NEDC. Do we have any representatives from the developers? Okay, thank you very much. This is the Joint Study Session of Thursday, February 21st, 2019. The purpose of this meeting, there's one item on the agenda, and it is the discussion regarding a proposal to locate the multi-generational recreation complex in the University North Park Increment District. And I'm going to let Catherine Walker, our interim city attorney, come up and do the presentation. Before she starts, I just want to say, I know this seems very sudden to a number of people. We have talked about various locations for these Norman Forward facilities, but this came up as an offer during the negotiations with the UNP developers, and we've known about it for just a few weeks. And we kind of got the go-ahead towards the end of last week that we could share this information with the public, and as soon as we realized that we could do that, I thought it was extremely important that we gathered the stakeholders together that are most impacted by this and represent all those young kiddos and the senior citizen center that are the seniors that are going to be impacted by any kind of decision we ultimately make. So I really appreciate all of you being here this evening.
All right, thank you. As the mayor said, we're here for a bit of an update, Norman Forward Projects, but just to review, and I know you all have lived this as much as I have, the Norman Forward Sales Tax, half a percent sales tax, was approved by the voters in October of 2015 and went into effect on January 1st, 2016. You can see on this screen, it's a little small, this is from one of the flyers, but it lists all of the projects that those funds were to pay for, including a senior citizen center, an indoor aquatic facility, and a multi-sport facility, and those are the ones that are highlighted above. The senior citizen center on that flyer said it was funded by GEO Bonds in 2008 or would be funded by Norman Forward Sales Tax Proceeds. At that time, the thinking was it would be located in the vicinity of Andrews Park or another reasonably available site. We learned after the adoption of that sales tax that GEO Bonds would only be available for the existing library location, which is a building that would be shared with city services. There are approximately, potentially approximately $7.6 million in Norman Forward Sales Tax Pay-Go funds that could be made available if the Griffin Soccer Complex lease with the Department of Health is approved. In talking with the senior groups, they've expressed a desire for a freestanding location with wellness center components. That's estimated to cost anywhere between eight and 12 million dollars. The current senior recreational center programming and a new facility, we think, would be close to eight. And then if we expand to include other wellness center components, it could go all the way up to 12, plus the additional operational cost. Council has spent a great deal of time exploring a number of locations, and I know many of you here today have been involved in that. The indoor aquatic facility was projected to cost around $14 million. It would include competitive and recreational pools. At that time, we thought it would probably be located adjacent to the YMCA because of the opportunity for our operational partnerships with the Y, but we thought we'd also seek out partnerships between the city, the Y, the school district, the hospital, and the Sooner Swim Club. The multi-sport facility was projected to cost about $8.5 million. This would be an indoor court facility that could host basketball, volleyball, pickleball, gymnastics, cheerleading events, all sorts of indoor sports, and it would replace the World War II hangar east of the YMCA, which the Optimus Club currently uses for basketball. So as council has worked on identifying locations for these three facilities, there was a recognition that efficiencies could be achieved by locating all three of the facilities together, not necessarily in one building, but on one site, and that's kind of been called the multi-generational recreation complex. North Base was identified as the site for this co-location and cooperation, and so we approved, council approved in December, maybe early January, an MOU with the University of Oklahoma to purchase that land, and the Board of Regents approved that in January. That land is a little over 14 acres, just east of the YMCA. It's a purchase price of $2.435 million, and pending our due diligence efforts, final purchase documents and closing would occur sometime in the middle of the summer. This is that property, this property highlighted in red is OU-owned property. The property we would be purchasing is highlighted in yellow, and then the green lines represent the road improvements that the city would be doing to access those facilities. The infrastructure costs here, because of those road improvements and because of stormwater system improvements and the other things needed to develop that land for these facilities, are anticipated to cost around $2.1 million. We believe the demolition of the hangar, we know there's probably some asbestos issues just because of when it was constructed, and so this is really an estimate, but we're thinking anywhere between $300,000 and $500,000. And then the land purchase is $2.4 million, as I said, so the total anticipated cost to get this site ready is 4.8 to a little over $5 million. So as the mayor said, we recently received a proposal from University North Park and University Town Center. Those are the two primary entities developing the University North Park development from Robinson to Tecumseh, south and north, and from I-35 to the airport property from west to east. The city has expressed a desire to use cultural facility funds, up to $8.75 million, which were authorized by the University North Park Tax Increment Financing District Project Plan to supplement funding for this multi-generational recreation complex. At the same time, the city's been in ongoing discussions with University Town Center and University North Park to end the incremental tax apportionments to the UNP TIF fund early. So this proposal arose during those settlement discussions, and I want to point out that this is just one piece of a larger-scale settlement. We do anticipate bringing forward to council a memorandum of understanding with the parties involved in that development in March to address the settlement process and issues and timetable. Even though this is part of a larger settlement discussion, that we don't want the settlement discussion to hold up the decision on this property, and so the parties are all agreed to work together to move that forward as council desires. So the proposal first said that the parties were willing to work with the city to identify suitable locations within University North Park for these facilities, and then it identified two potential locations for the city to consider. One location was property owned by the Norman Economic Development Coalition, and one location was property owned by University Town Center. This first location, the NEDC land, we're really talking about land, I don't know if my mouse will show up, here it is, north of Rock Creek, this is Rock Creek, if you can see that, east of 24th, and this is land that the Economic Development Coalition bought to develop into office park sites several years ago. And the city certainly, along with others, are partners with NEDC in their operations. They also bought a piece of land up here, this whole section, for advanced manufacturing. That will not be impacted by this proposal. What's shaded in blue is property owned by Immuno Mykologics, the local company that owns this building right here, and they have an option to purchase those lots, so those lots would not be available for any location of these facilities. So you can see that leaves five lots. Those five lots total a little over 21 acres. The site would give possible access to the facilities from Corporate Center Drive and Rock Creek Road, although we'd have to extend Rock Creek Road some length. It's about 465 feet east to the property line from where it stops now. Water and sewer improvements are already in place, and the cost to purchase would essentially be what's left to owe on that property, so $3 to $4 million. We believe that through this settlement and appropriate project plan amendments and a development agreement, that economic development TIF funds could be used to purchase that land. It would provide access to bus service and legacy trail at that location. The second location is land owned by University Town Center. Here on the north, you can see, it's even harder to see now because it's all white, Rock Creek Road, this is 24th running across, left to right. You can see Embassy Suites on here with the conference center. The property we're talking about is just north of Embassy Suites, and you can see some squares drawn out here. This is approximately two acres down here on the bottom for a cultural facility that was agreed to be donated to the city by UTC in a development agreement. They also agreed to make available additional land for a cultural facility and then even more land for a regional draw entertainment venue tract at that time that was being considered. So here are those numbers, the two acres they would donate for a cultural facility, and then the additional one and a half acres they would sell to us for $5 a square foot under that development agreement. That doesn't expire until 2016.
Just make clear, this is the original development agreement that was done back in 2012.
2012, actually 2015 was the amendment.
Okay.
I apologize. UTC would sell under this agreement up to 16.87 additional acres for $5.50 a square foot for an entertainment venue. That expired in October because the city did not have an entertainment venue proposal on the table at that time. In the letter we received from UTC and UNP, it said, if this is done as part of an overall settlement, they're willing to discuss the possibility of either donating or selling additional land to the city. And so we have the three and a half acres, and they would be willing to donate or sell additional land to meet the needs of these facilities. Water and sewer is located along the perimeter of the property. We still could access it from Rock Creek Road or from 24th Avenue, but Rock Creek Road, again, would probably have to be extended some length to accommodate that access. It's in close proximity to hotels and restaurants, and there's existing access to bus service and to legacy trail. The maximum cost, I think, if you use these numbers from the Amendment One to Development Agreement Number Five, is about $2.8 million, although I see, you know, the offer in the letter as an opportunity to negotiate that down, and so that is going to depend on what ends up being negotiated. So in summary, we have the three land options, North Base, and I just want to point out that that transaction is not going to be jeopardized by our consideration of these alternative proposals. We also have the land that was suggested just north of Embassy Suites, then the land north of Rock Creek, of course, that's owned by NEDC, so we would have to be working with them to make sure that that is okay with them. And then the developers also said, you know, they're willing to look at other sites in UNP, so if these sites didn't work, I think they would be open to other suggestions or proposals. So when this was presented to council in the discussion, in the context of a discussion of a possible settlement, of threat and litigation, the first thing council wanted to do was get this in front of the stakeholder groups to figure out if this is something those groups would be interested in and to get the feedback, and so that's why we're here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but then I'm going to sit down so you guys can get that feedback.
Okay, so we're going to start with the council, and then we'll move on to the stakeholder groups, and then we'll move on to other people. I know there are other people in the audience that are particularly, I noticed, representatives from ADG and other people in the audience that have been following this and are very concerned about it as well. Councilmember Castleberry.
Thank you for that summary. On the slide, we go back to the North Base land, the cost, the $5 million cost. Does that include, I know it's got sewer in it, does that include water?
No, and I had a conversation with OU just today about the status of water and sewer service in that area. It's never been plotted, it's always been owned by OU or the federal government when it was a base, and so the lines that exist now are not city lines, and so that does not include that number, and that's something that would have to be added to that.
So we would have to add water and sewer lines?
Water and sewer line.
Any estimate of what that would be?
No, I don't have a, I'd hate to throw a number out there, I don't have a good estimate at this time.
But it's going to be, it's an additional cost?
Yes, it would be an additional cost.
It's more money.
It's a million.
It's definitely more money.
It's a million, isn't it, mostly?
It would depend on how many feet of line we're putting in.
Okay.
I'm not sure where they would connect up.
I'm assuming a pool would need a water line.
Right.
Okay.
So where does the Y get its water?
They get it from OU.
Okay.
So you have some lines out there.
Being certified by the OU water line, okay. Other questions? Councilmember Scott.
And I guess the fire station, Fire Station 7 would also get their water up there from the city, I would imagine? And then I also have another question following up to that.
I'm not sure of the answer on that.
Okay. And then, well, I guess there are water towers, I think, up there as well, but if we were to accept one of these proposals from the UNP, UTC, how would that affect ending the TIF effectively by June 30th?
It depends on the MOU and how those negotiations go. I don't think it necessarily adds more time to the increment collection, it just depends on how the other project costs are dealt with.
Let me think about that for a little bit.
Just from my conversations with Catherine, the way I understand it, the 30th date for ending the increment, that's that solid? It's can we get all the other agreements negotiated out? And the plan is still try to do that just as close to that date as possible. This doesn't necessarily, in any way, extend what we're doing.
If you look at the remaining project costs that were contemplated in the project plan, it's about $25 million, and so we've got some, we think we'll have collected around 15 to 17 million by the end of the fiscal year, and so we've got that difference that would be made up through agreed-on amendments to those project costs. The money, I think, from what I've understood from the feedback so far, is it would be the cultural facility funds being used to supplement Norman Forward funds for these projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
And just to clarify, using cultural facility funds for that does not extend the collection, the sales tax collection for the TIF?
Not necessarily, again, it's going to
Unless we don't
Depend on, yeah, how many project costs that we have left to spend that are agreed on in unwinding the TIF.
Okay, and I was just going to make a note because a follow-up on the question there was, I mean, I think OU gets all of its water from the city since 2006, I think, so I'd be interested to know how that's working up there, or what the system is for piping and
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm not sure about North Base. I know on campus they have some of their own water supply for irrigation purposes, but I'm not sure what they're using on North Base.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Hi Catherine, I have a few questions about the North Base land situation. Has the infrastructure, the roads, and the stormwater, the water requirements changed since the vote of the people in 2015 for the Norman Ford projects?
No, I think this was all contemplated at that time, primarily, no, it didn't contemplate, as far as I can tell, the water and sewer line improvements, but I know we did anticipate some significant infrastructure costs.
But the water and the stormwater needs haven't changed since it was put to the vote of the people in 2015, right?
Not to my knowledge, the stormwater has not.
I mean, and if there wasn't water there today, there presumably wasn't water there in 2015 when the people voted on it, right?
Right, and I don't recall any specific discussion about that at that time.
Was there money included in Norman Ford to address any of these infrastructure improvements, being roads, stormwater, water?
Yes, if I can get back to this flyer. Over here on the bottom, right-hand side, it looks like there was $3 million set aside for traffic analysis, street and stormwater improvements, and traffic signals at various project locations.
Would it be your opinion that that $3 million could be used also in the UNP area if it was decided to move these Norman Ford projects into the UNP area?
As long as it was an infrastructure improvement for a Norman Forward project, then I think those Norman Forward funds could be used for any of the projects, regardless of their location.
Okay, but of the $5 million, going back to North Base, for the $5 million you showed for North Base as potential infrastructure needs, there's $3 million in the Norman Ford budget to pay those costs?
Yes, but I think those were probably anticipated for a number of projects, not just that one location, so it just, it would use up all of those funds to do that.
Did we not budget in Norman Ford to address these infrastructure needs for the North Base area?
I mean, I would turn to Anthony for that, but I think it was included, and then this $3 million was also built in there.
Okay, was there money included for the land acquisition in the Norman Ford projects at North Base?
No.
No, not for these projects.
Do you know why?
No. I know at one time a lease, a dollar a year lease or something like that was considered, but I don't know where those budget numbers came from in regards to land acquisition.
For the UNP property, to do an apples-and-apples comparison, are there infrastructure requirements that will be required at any of the locations, like any road work, stormwater, water lines, things of that sort, that would be on the city's responsibility?
Get to this map. On this location, the NEDC land, you can see these blue lines, those are water lines that are already in, green lines are sewer, I believe. There are also some stormwater drainage points along here, so the infrastructure for this site is pretty well in place. It would just be that additional extension of Rock Creek Road, if needed, down here to serve the property. On the UTC land, there's water and sewer around the perimeter, but it's not been extended into this area because it hasn't been plotted yet, so there would be some cost to do that.
Okay.
Also the Rock Creek Road extension on the north.
And while you have that slide up, in your statement, you made a comment about access off of 24th and Rock Creek, potentially off of both of those, whereas the way I look at, the way I see this map, the culture facility, two acres, is land-logged, if you will, maybe we get further acreage, but I don't know where that would be, but you'd be accessing it through the parking lot of the conference center of Embassy Suites, am I seeing that right?
Possibly, it depends on how it lays out. When it was just a expo center-type cultural facility, I think that was what was contemplated, but with it growing into a potential multi-generational recreation facility, I think that's something that we would have to work out with the developer to determine, one, where in this area is it really going to be located? Is this bottom, you know, center corner really where we want it, or do we want it closer to Rock Creek or closer to 24th? That's something we would have to work out, and then, of course, the access to it. I don't think it necessarily has to be an access point through the conference center parking lot.
That would be, when I saw that map, that would be a concern of mine, if everybody accessing these facilities has to go through the parking lot, I think that could be problematic.
Yeah, and that land's going to expand, so if it expands up to the west to accommodate all of the facilities, I think there would be an entry point likely, you know, off of 24th here. If you extended it to the north, obviously the Rock Creek entry point would be really important, it just depends on how those projects lay out.
Do we have an estimate of the cost to do some of the infrastructure work, like running the additional lines or rerouting lines or extending the road?
I don't, since we don't know where in this area it would necessarily be located, I don't have those costs, but as this process develops, that's definitely something we'll be getting.
Has there been any kind of a traffic study looked at to see if, for example, it accessed off of 24th Street, whether a signal would be necessary or anything?
No, we haven't done any traffic studies yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I might just point out, we've only known about this a very few weeks, so it really hasn't been time for us to do a lot of studies yet. Councilmember Wilson.
How much, I'm getting lost in the numbers. How much money would we free up? So say we chose one of these locations, used the cultural money to pay for it, and negotiated down some of our possible litigation commitments that we could be sued for. What does that free, and we end the TIF in June, what does that free up money-wise for our general fund?
It would, if you use the cultural facility funds, it's really freeing up Norman Forward funds for these projects also. As you all know, we have an issue with our Norman Forward funds as well as our general fund, and so it frees up Norman Forward funds to complete these projects and for other projects potentially.
We have 15 to 17 possibly collected in the TIF fund with $25 million worth of commitments, right?
Yes.
We can, to unwind, I'm just trying to gather in my head what unwinding this looks like, we have to, we have a couple of development agreements that need to be worked out, and then we have some road projects that we all are concerned about. And I'm just concerned that doesn't, I don't know, I don't know what my question is, so keep talking.
Well, it's a matter, it's a matter of math and determining what project costs remain me either, but that's why I went to law school. But it's a matter of just figuring out what project costs the parties can agree on going forward and what gets cut or reduced. And so I think you'll see a little more detail about that in the MOU, but that's something that the parties are working on, and I don't want to get too much into those details because that's still very much in flux, but that is what we're working on to meet that goal of June 30.
Okay, and I have one more question, they're just kind of popping in here, they're not fully formulated, but we could separate out these projects too, right? We don't have to, if we decided to do some portion of this, we wouldn't have to have all three facilities over there like we had suggested for the North Base, right?
Sure, sure, you just, you know, it's just a matter of identifying land and getting the cost for that.
Okay. Councilmember Bierman.
Catherine, I've got one question, well, no, I have more than one question. My first question is, if you go back to the original Norman Forward page for the multi-sport facility, it talks about replacing the World War II hangar gym east of the YMCA, so I would imagine that that would mean that those costs were also anticipated to remove the hangar, abate any asbestos, I assume no asbestos magically materialized between 2015 and now.
Yeah, I would assume those would have been built in, but I don't know, I don't know the detail on those line items for that eight and a half million dollars. This was a really strongly-led citizen initiative, and I know that those groups met extensively in developing these numbers, but I don't know what all was included in that or how much to compare it to today's numbers.
Because what concerns me in all of this discussion is that we're kind of hinting around it by saying that the cultural facility money could free up Norman Forward funds. How much more are we expecting it to cost to build the indoor aquatic center and the multi-sport facility than was originally budgeted? In other words, how much of the cultural facility funds are going to be used to plug gaps in those budgets?
I think we are expecting some potential shortages, particularly on the indoor aquatic facility, but we don't have those projects designed yet, and I think that was one of the considerations in locating these together because there may be some efficiencies in doing them as all one large project, even if it may be separate facilities. So I think the hope there was that we would be able to achieve some savings, but I don't think we have a good firm number on what it's going to be yet because it's not been designed.
Because that's part of my concern.
Sure.
Is that it, while it is an attractive use of this money to build all three projects together, I just want to be sure that we're not skating over the fact that the two of these three projects that did have Norman Forward budgets are likely going to be over budget, and so I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that we're very clear about that, because this is a problem we've seen with past Norman Forward projects and something that we are likely to see with future Norman Forward projects as well, aside from our sales tax collection.
Right.
Simply the fact that what we expected them to cost is likely going to cost more.
Yeah.
If we're going to be providing everything that we said we're going to be providing in these facilities.
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, it is supplementing those budgets to finish these projects the way they were envisioned, but it's possible it'll free up some money in Norman Forward for other projects too, we just We just won't know those amounts until we get them designed and have better estimates.
Right. And of course, that would not include the senior center because that had no budget. So whatever is left over from plugging the gaps in the budget for the indoor aquatic center and the multisport facility is certainly not going to be enough to cover the building of the senior center, regardless of where it's located.
Right. And as I said earlier, I think according to our finance director, there's some pay-go funds potentially available that may help address that.
Well, and then, I don't.
Also, the, the money to pay for the senior citizen center was expected to come from the money that was freed up in Norman Forward from the land lease.
Yeah.
It wasn't expected to be paid for with the cultural center money.
Right, but that money.
Except for the land. We were going to, we were going to see if we could take some of that money to pay for the land.
Right, but as we know, the funds from, freed up from the Griffin Land Acquisition would also not have been enough to build the kind of senior center that I think we all wanted to build. So. And then lastly, I guess this is probably more of a comment than a question. Because of all of these things, like Councilmember Hickman mentioned, you know, some of the anticipated infrastructure costs for the North Base land were costs anticipated back in 2015 as well. And that's why I brought up the demolition of the hangar and the costs associated with that because that was anticipated in Norman Forward. So I'm just a little concerned that we're not really making a true apples to apples comparison because the 4.8 to 5.03 million sure looks like a heck of a lot more than the other two land options. But a lot of these costs were anticipated already. A lot of what's included in this is not new information to council members who had to consider the Norman Forward proposal back in 2015. So that's my concern about that, is that we're not necessarily looking at all three of these options or four options, if you include option D, which could be anything. That we're not actually putting all of these on an equal footing because a lot of what is anticipated that it's going to have to be done on the North Base land, we already knew about this. This wasn't new. Adding the senior center to that doesn't change a lot of these costs. We were going to have to do them, even if it was just the two projects on the site that we originally anticipated them to be on. The only difference is the land purchase cost. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, Councilmember, go over here first. Okay. Okay, I, I think she's the third. Councilmember Castleberry.
I don't know, this may be a question for Mr. Francisco, but of the project costs that we currently get out there, the, not the one I'm most concerned about, but the one that I think my ward's most concerned about is the Robinson Street expansion at Crossroads Boulevard. Regardless of what we do here, those funds have already been collected and they're already set aside, have been appropriated, is my understanding, for that.
Correct.
So no matter what we do here, none of that is jeopardized. We will be fixing Robinson Street Crossroads with some TIF funds and some ACOG funds and.
That money's been budgeted. The ACOG funding has been applied for, obviously that's a high priority for the city and that will get done.
Okay. And also on some of these road processes, just to answer, address some of Councilmember Beerman's concerns, we also put like $6 million in for James Garner Boulevard expansion. And I guess Mr. Lillard can address that. We anticipate $3 million from ACOG, approximately. And we also had anticipated, so the, and the budgets in Norman Forward also, when we put those together, anticipated timing. There's a, there's an inflation factor in there. This was not all 2015 numbers. And there's a stage in there. So I do think the indoor aquatic facility is probably going to be more expensive than it was originally anticipated. But I think there, I think some of this is savings. If you don't have to spend the land acquisition cost and you've got $7.6 million to come in there for that. So I think there is, some of these costs were anticipated, but if we don't have to spend them, you know, we can reallocate those to whichever projects we want to go to. And if you have at least two of the facilities together, then that's one parking lot as opposed to two parking lots. And parking lots are very expensive and take up a lot of area. And so from a stormwater standpoint, if we can reduce our impervious surface by combining those, maybe three of them, I think that's an attractive part of what I like about this. But I did want to make sure, my, Councilman Scott probably cares about this also, the Robinson Street Crossroads Boulevard intersection is still protected regardless of what we do here, that type of thing.
It's been budgeted for, so I.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. And then another one actually that you mentioned earlier was Rock Creek. I think you said something earlier about expanding Rock Creek as well.
Yes, there's just a little, and it's hard to see on this map at all. Can't get that pulled up. There's a little leg of Rock Creek east of 24th that has never been completed. You can see it down here on the bottom. So depending on the access you need to the property, that may be, may need to be completed and it likely wouldn't go all the way to the property line, but it would be somewhere, you know, somewhere in here, we would have to construct additional.
And that's for the NEDC or you, like, there's two different land options up here.
Yeah, you know, these land options are, one's on the north side of Rock Creek and one's on the south side. So depending on the final layout, you, you know, you may want to do that regardless of which location you choose.
Right. Or if we don't choose one of these locations, maybe we want to finish that out. But what, and I'm wondering, that's probably not been budgeted for. I know this is very new to us and so we haven't thought about these types of costs.
Right, and I don't have estimates for that. And of course, some of it's going to depend on how the property, how the site design is done.
The site design. And then would, so do you have any kind of, you know how I like things very, just like easy to read and very plain and simple? Do you have any sort of just cost comparison, like side by side? We can look at, you know, the total cost, infrastructure included, construction of the facilities in each location?
I, I don't have that in a side by side format and I definitely could do that. There just are some numbers we don't know yet.
Because of the traffic studies and things that you, I mean.
Yeah, you know, where the, where the property, which property we're going to choose, how it would lay out on the property. So whether or not we'd need to extend Rock Creek, what kind of water line and sewer line extension we'd need on the property south of Rock Creek, what kind of water and sewer improvements we need to make on North Base. Those are things we don't have yet. And so that would all be part of that consideration.
But we have a pretty good idea of what the North Base location.
Yes, it's just, it's just the exception of that water and sewer improvement cost.
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
Catherine, could you go to slide eight or page four?
Which one is that?
It shows the big red, all the property and everything. So the large, for just some historical reference for everybody in the room, the large square property on the left hand side, is that the City of Norman property?
It is.
So when we were working on Norman Forward a few years ago, the reason why there's no money budgeted for buying land for these projects is the city proposed to OU that we would trade them that giant square of land in the middle of the runway that's surrounded by all the other property they own for that little bit of yellow. And they agreed at the time that that was something they were interested in and even swapped under the past administration of the university. And in July with the new president, they decided that deal was not in their best interest anymore. And so now we still own that big giant square. And I don't know if you might let everybody know the reason why OU decided that property was not valuable to them?
They had an appraisal done last October that contrary to prior appraisals, did not see any value in this property because it's so restricted by the FAA on how it can be developed. It's not like we can go out there and build something. It's in the middle of a runway. So that appraiser felt like that property didn't have any monetary value because of the development restrictions.
So that's just, I just wanted to bring that up so everyone understands that that is, was our original intention. Our original plan was to trade that land and we thought we had a good faith agreement, I guess, with the university. And new administration comes in and they reevaluate all their property and what they believe is valuable to the university and they decide that the land we own is worthless. And so they'll sell us the property that we wanted or lease it to us perhaps. So that's just a little bit of history about how we got in this situation as far as this land goes. Thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up? And to kind of, to follow up on Councilman Holman's deal, all of a sudden, this runway here is now worth $2.4 million based on the new appraisal. Correct?
Not the runway, the property that we're purchasing.
Right, but it was, the difference, that was the delta in there, that this was, became.
Yeah.
But they, we have a new appraisal and that's.
They had a new appraisal and that was the value. I don't recall what the previous value was of the property that we're purchasing. But the previous arrangement, I think, was more of a long-term lease with a nominal amount of rent plus the land swap.
Okay, but you, can you talk about, you said that if we don't buy the land by North Base, which we've already agreed with OU and they've agreed, that's $2.4 million. If we decide to not do that, then would that be $2.4 million of savings?
Yeah, that'd be $2.4 million you weren't spending, yeah.
And so that would be a potential, additional potential savings that would go into this that we need to take into consideration. Because otherwise, we're going to buy that land and if we buy it, we probably ought to put something on it.
Right.
I'm assuming for under $7,000 an acre, we probably want to do something with it. As opposed, if we put stuff over, we're not going to buy it if we do something, one of these proposals over in UNP.
Right. We're in the due diligence process and, and so we have about three to six months to make this determination and decide whether we want to go ahead and close on that property.
And do we have any ramifications if we decide not to, if we back out of the deal on our end?
I believe OU is willing to let us out of that deal. I had a conversation today that indicated so. You know, we approached them about selling the property. They weren't really wanting or looking to sell it necessarily. So I think that would not be an issue.
Councilmember Hickman.
I just want to clarify a couple of things for some of the people watching at home or here. So what we're talking about really are sort of two separate issues, the Norman Ford projects and then what we call the TIF, the North, the North Park TIF, right?
Right, as far as the cultural facility funds go.
And so the, and the Norman Ford projects have their own separate budgets and we're talking about where to place those projects, the indoor aquatic center and the indoor sports facility, the senior center, whether to put those in the North Base area with this land from OU or in somewhere in the, in the TIF area, right? If we put it in the TIF area, we can use what we're calling the cultural facility dollars potentially to cover some of the costs associated with those Norman Ford projects or for infrastructure. And that's about 8.75 million.
Right.
Now, if we use that cultural facility money, wouldn't you agree that that potentially makes ending the TIF early or by June, let's say, potentially more challenging because that's project cost that we are spending that we still have, we have to find other project costs to eliminate to get to be where we have gathered the TIF increment funds and it equals the project costs that we're going to expend?
Yes.
Because if we don't use that money, you can take that $8.75 million out and if the delta between collected increment and project cost is about $10 million, that gets you almost there, but just by eliminating the cultural facility.
That's true. That is true. If you do the cultural, if you use all the cultural facility funds and no projects are eliminated or reduced, you will not collect enough money by the end of June to end the increment allocation.
And then you made comments about the Norman Ford projects and, and there's some budget concerns with those. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. And, and I'm probably not the best person to talk about that. I think Anthony's probably more well-versed in the, the numbers. But I, I think we're, we are seeing some sales tax revenue shortfalls in that fund. In addition to that, we, we anticipate some projects costing more than was originally anticipated. And so I think there's just a general overall concern about having sufficient Norman Forward funds to do the projects as we, as we planned and in the order we planned them.
And I guess this is one of my concerns. I know I've mentioned this before from the dais. We have a Norman Ford Oversight Committee of Citizens. And I'm just concerned that we're not hearing from them about this budget issue. And I know I've asked that question in the past. And now all of a sudden, we're hearing that there are budget issues on Norman Ford projects. And I just want to know, you know, have we received something from this Oversight Committee? Is, are they, are they looking at this? Because, you know, I'm frustrated to hear, you know, these anecdotal comments about, you know, the aquatic center is going to go over budget or we're not collecting enough money, but we have this committee and maybe it's not their charge. I don't know. But, you know, as council, it's helpful to have information to make informed decisions versus just rumors and innuendos in the community. And so do you know anything about the status of that discussion with that committee?
Well, I know Anthony, every month when they meet, presents the current financial situation or budget numbers to them as well as the projections, just like he does to the City Council Finance Committee. So I know they are getting that information. I believe they met this past Monday, most recently, to receive that information. And I think he went through all of those numbers with them at that time.
Because the last presentation I recall from that committee was, you know, we're not, no, no red flags, no concerns. We're moving forward, it kind of as is. That's my recollection. Maybe I'm wrong. Anthony?
I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director and Staff to the Citizens Financial Oversight Board for Norman Forward. And as was reported to the council in the CFOB's annual report to the council, the belief is that all of the Norman Forward projects can be completed at their budgeted levels. But there are some cash flow concerns in the middle years of the Norman Forward period that may have to be addressed by changing some of the timing of the pay-as-you-go projects and that sort of thing. The committee has not discussed, to my remembrance, potential overruns in the Aquatic Center project. The assumption has always been that the projects would be completed at their budgeted levels. As council has moved forward, for example, with appropriating additional funds to the Tennis Center project, the committee has discussed that, reported back to the council about their concerns about that as well as the percentage shortfalls in the sales tax collections. But the overall feeling has always been from the CFOB that the projects could be completed at their budgeted levels. Now, if there were to be a formal presentation to the CFOB that, for example, the aquatic center is expected to go over budget, the committee would have to consider that and perhaps make a presentation to the council in, in response to that. But that has not been before the committee to this point.
So I guess I'm just trying to clarify and understand, and I assume the public would like to know as well. Do we know if these Norman Ford projects, their aquatic center and indoor sports facility are, are, are going to be over budget? If we build what we told the people when they voted on this, you know, and, and, you know, we're trying to maintain public trust, is it going to cost more? Are we just guessing that right now? Because I, because I'm hearing different things. I'm hearing we can get these done on budget, but I'm hearing we may need to use cultural facility money to plug Norman Ford budget issues. So let's tap into some of the TIF money. And I'm just trying to figure out where.
As each of the projects moves forward and there are ad hoc committees appointed to consider the design and the final scope of each of the projects, some changes may have to be made. Council will consider, for example, the, in the master planning process for the Griffin Soccer Complex. As that budget was refined, it was not believed that all of the things that had been originally scoped when Norman Forward was, was approved could be done within its budget. So some of the scope of that project was cut back and, i.e. the indoor soccer facility was delayed until we knew what could be afforded within Norman Forward or future proposals. One of the things that council may consider is what you're talking about tonight. If in fact, it is believed that the aquatic center can't be constructed for the budget that was originally set forth in Norman Forward, might you cut back the scope of the aquatic center or might you supplement that budget from TIF funds or from some other source? Those are things for council to consider for the CFOB's review as you move forward. But again, what the CFOB has considered to date has been the projects being completed for their budgeted amounts.
Okay, thanks, Anthony.
I would really, if that's all the questions from the council for right now, I would really like to get input from the different groups that are here tonight and trying to think of the best way we can do this so that each group can get a sufficient amount of representation. I don't know if the groups have picked somebody as a spokesperson or if there's two or three people in each group. We want to hear from all of you. But what I thought I'd do is kind of go through and ask the groups that have to do with the projects first for their input or their questions. You may have lots of questions. So I thought we would do the ad hoc senior group. Then we would do the Sooner Swim Club, the aquatics group. the aquatics group, and then we would do the multi-sports. And then some of you really have to do with all of the different groups and you may want to have, we have the Financial Oversight Board, we've got representatives from the TIF Oversight Board that may want to weigh in. So why don't I start over here and? Who has it? Terry? Okay, Terry. Why don't we start over here with the seniors? We have a number of there. We've got some ad hoc group members and we have some of the seniors from the 21st Century.
Hi, I'm Julie Knudson, President, Norman Seniors Association.
Yeah, so get it up close.
Okay.
I can hear you, but it's not very amplified.
Yeah, I don't think it's amplified. No.
Nothing? Yep, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, I am Julie Knudson, President of Norman Seniors Association. And we have had extensive talks. I will be very honest. I've had more coffee in the last week than I ever want to have again. Our board met last night and we appreciate the opportunity to be up at University North Park, but we would respectfully decline. Our major issues are distance from the core of our seniors. The bulk of our seniors are in Core Norman and East Norman and that location is just really not feasible for most. And then we have a safety issue and we don't feel that having our seniors driving in the University North Park area is very safe. The intersection at Robinson and 24th is a nightmare for me and I still do it, but it's a nightmare. And the older I get, the maybe less I will want to go up there. We also are afraid, greatly afraid, that if we build the Wellness Center up there, that the 300 to 400 people a day that we are anticipating going will not go because of location. So we understand that Aquatic Center, Multi-Sport Center may want to go up there and we fully support your decisions, but we respectfully decline being up there.
Okay, thank you.
Dave Beck, also a board member for the Senior Association. I had a meeting with Julie and with Betty yesterday. We went up and toured with Mike Dover, the center by Capitol Hill High School. We're really impressed. One of the things that Mike Dover told us is, you may think it's great to have a community center where all different age groups can go, but one thing they've learned in doing the four and soon to be five senior centers is this is not a place that everybody wants to go to. Seniors want to have their spaces for doing specific senior things. Now, you can, as a senior center and a senior association, we can integrate with different groups like the school district and things like that with other programs, but we're not an event center, we're not a cultural center by nature that the pool or the multi-sports facilities could be. And that's one of the reasons, I think, that we decided that. I was just going to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. So you, any, any other seniors want to weigh in? All right, thank you all very much. So we're moving to the swim folks.
Hello, I'm Kent Nicholson. I coach the Sooner Swim Club and both the high school teams. And the swimming community, I think the biggest concern of ours is not so much where, but when. What we don't want to see is a change in location, slow down the process. We don't want to see the choosing of the firms that has started now that the, that the North Base property had been settled and that process is getting going. We don't want to see any of that slowdown. We have real concerns about our present home lasting to the present timeline and we don't want to see that timeline get any further. We're a year out from where it was originally and we're concerned. And so while the other location, it looks great, I think it'll work just fine. We're all about time and we just need the projects to get going.
So you're fine, it, it really depends on timing is the big thing for you?
Yeah, we're big, the big thing is, is timing. We are in favor of the move, that's fine. It looks real good out there. We just need the thing to get moving.
Okay, any other swim folks?
If you talk, Nancy.
Nancy, you need to, why don't you stand up and identify yourself? You don't have to walk up here, you just have to stand up.
I think in terms of location, the University North Park or you? Okay. The new location has certain advantages because you don't have to do all the infrastructure first and prepare it, which is also a huge cost. And if you're having swim meets or regional events, having it where people can get in and out easily, you already have roads, you have other facilities that they might like to use because they aren't swimming the whole time or playing basketball. I think that there are certain advantages to having it in the proposed new location. And so I think we could certainly get the swimming community in back of it.
Other swim, Aquatic Center folks, do you want to? Robert, you want to say anything? Oh, okay, you want to talk to the other group, okay. Okay, let's go on to the, the multi-sports then, if, if, if that's, we kind of get the sense of the swimming people.
Yep, okay. I think something of an emerging consensus arose before this meeting outside with the senior folks, the indoor aquatic folks and the multi-sport, which is essentially basketball, volleyball, other things. I'm Rob Norman, I'm Award III resident. I'm currently president of the Norman Optimus Club, the tenant at the hangar. It's sort of been a necessary evil up to now to incur what we caught, talked about, what's a pretty significant cost of tearing down the hangar. We have information that yes, there is indeed asbestos there and that some old information we had when another project was planned for up there is that the, the tear down with the asbestos remediation would be significantly more than what looks like was up there. It seems like the indoor aquatic folks are cautiously in support of moving up to University North Park. The senior folks are in support. If we want to move up there, we don't want to drag them up there if they don't want to go up there. I think it's paramount to take into account where we want to go as groups. What's paramount to us with the Norman Optimus Club and the new multi-sport indoor facility, basketball and volleyball and cheer and things like that in Norman is, like Kent said, we don't want further delay. The problem is, we think the North Base plan as currently proposed and put on the table is going to cause significant cost and delay over going up to University North Park. The tear down of the hangar is now an unnecessary evil and it's just an evil. That thing's going to come down, that's going to delay the building of what appears to be a preference for two more projects up at either North Park or North Base. And quite frankly, basketball and perhaps swimming is going to be down in Norman to a significant extent for a long time. We go to North Park for the indoor sports facility and the Aquatic Center. We go to North Park, we don't have that downtime and that extra extraordinary expense of the tear down of the hangar. The tear down of the hangar doesn't happen and the hangar becomes a transitional facility that can help us bridge the gap from old to new and fulfill the old promise and the old wish of Cindy Rosenthal, who was sitting in the mayor's seat back at the time of Norman Ford, to make sure the kids have a place to play in the meantime. That's what she wanted to make sure. The indoor sports facility was not tops on her list, but she wanted to make sure if we're going to do it, let's make sure the kids always have a place to play. That's the most important thing. That's the most important thing to us. We run the hangar. We want to have most favored nation status in the new facility. We want the hangar just to be, maybe after this is all over, we now have a chance for that just to be an overflow facility, a historic site that can stay up, that can be used by the schools, that can be used by the communities, that can still serve the purpose it served for 43 years, but, but not be something that has to be the primary facility anymore. We want that great primary facility, but we don't want to be stuck with nothing for all this period of time while we've got to tear it down, put the roads in, put the new facilities up. We go to North Park, we don't have to do that anymore. And it's pretty clear that no one really wants to be at North Base, all other things being considered roughly equal. We don't want to be at North Base anymore with that multi, multi-sport facility. There, there's too many negatives to being at North Base now. It's, it's too high a transaction cost, too much delay. The seniors don't want to be there. I think the aquatics folks need some assurances and I agree particularly with Mr. Hickman's comments that some more due diligence needs to be done up at University North Park. But I think when we get to the end of the day, we're going to do that and we're going to find that University North Park is a far superior place to put the multi-sports facility and to put the indoor aquatic center.
Okay, thank you very much. Other members of other groups, representative individuals that want to make a comment? This is, this is super important to us to get this input. Ms. Betty?
Betty Mafucci, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would just like to assert that I hope the principals will now realize that we're not going to have to pay 2.4 million for the land on North Base. The seniors still need a piece of land that's adequate for the kind of center we want. So I hope the principals are out there looking for the right piece of land for us. Need I say more?
No.
Nadine Jewell, the only thing I want to say is if there's asbestos in that building and those kids have no business being in that building in the first place.
Okay, thank you. I, I think as long as the asbestos is contained, it is not dangerous. It's when you, it's when you try to tear it down and you open up the structure, that's when it becomes really, I assume that they, they have it tested.
Correct. It, it is contained currently as long as it's in that solid state of containment, which it is in mind. It's precisely the demolition that creates the problem. Contractors can do that, but it takes an awful lot of time and expense to do that. And there's risk involved when, take the wrecking ball to something with asbestos, suddenly you're freeing that toxic substance. It's dangerous if you do it wrong.
I think Dr. Ellis.
Steve Ellis. Okay. You can't hear yourself in this thing, that's interesting.
I can hear you.
Two, two issues that I think are important. It sounds now like we're looking at acquisition costs for two places, which seems to be a surprising result from the discussion that we're talking about. So if we're doing something in, in University North Park, we're still going to have to find a place to put the seniors. The second point that I want to raise is just that's very unclear to me why we're involving all of this stuff in the sort of TIF negotiations. It seems that any kinds of offers that are sort of partial offers to handle potential lawsuits over the TIF are really premature unless we know what the rest of the deal is. So my suggestion was that we all wait until we find out what the memorandum of understanding be negotiated is before we make any decisions about where to put things, especially when putting things at various kinds of places is supposed to be part of our strategy for avoiding lawsuits. One, one last thing, OU might find our property up on North Base more valuable to them if we decide to do something else with it. So it would make a great truck parking lot.
I, I think the characterization of the negotiations as the land being involved to avoid litigation, I, I don't think that's an appropriate characterization of what's happening. So I think what's happening as part of the negotiations, this has been offered. We still have all the other parts of the agreement to work through and that's what we're trying to do. The council has said repeatedly, we're going to end the TIF, we're going to try to end everything on the 30th and, but we want to do it in the most legal, the most defensible and the best economic outcomes for the city and for our taxing jurisdiction partners. That is extremely important. That's what we're trying to do. That's what our legal department's doing. And right now, the part we're working on is with the UNP, UTC group. Okay, Ms. Gallagher?
Anne Gallagher, 29-year supporter of aquatics, 30-year member of the Y and a senior citizen. So I've got, I've got a toe in, in everybody's little facility, properly soccer and baseball as well. I have some concerns. One of those concerns is when the plan was originally for the Aquatic Center and this, and the multi, and the multi-sports center to be next to the Y, there was not a promise, but an understanding that the Y would help support that as far as being able to run the operational aspect of that. What happens now if it's not there? I, you know, I've not talked to Joe Paisley at the Y to find out if he was still interested if it was still at North Base versus the UNP, but now are we adding additional operational costs by moving it to the UNP?
Mr. Paisley is here from the Y.
Thank you, thank you, Anne. My name is Joe Paisley. I'm the President and CEO of the Cleveland County Family YMCA. Just sitting here thinking and listening, 35 years ago, the citizens of Norman built a state of art, state of the art YMCA to serve Norman. And I think that as the person that is currently in charge of the helm of that Y, we do the best we can to make sure that every individual in this community has access to an affordable quality experience. We have a great pool, we have a great gym, we have a great fitness center, we have a multi-generation facility that reaches over 11,000 of our fellow community members. 3,500 of those are over the age of 50. The rest is mixed up among, from the cradle to the grave, I often say. Anne and Roger and Jane and others that I see back here from the Y that I see every day in the morning at the Y are, are great members of the Y. I also see a lot of other familiar faces. But we are concerned, we're concerned the future of your Y and it is your Y. It is not our Y, it belongs to your community, it is your YMCA. We're concerned about the future of your Y. We have worked very, very hard throughout this whole Norman Ford project to make sure that we were partnering in becoming a trustworthy partner and that we were making sure that we're working very closely with folks from the city, Sooner Swim Club and, and the high schools and all the parties in place for the indoor aquatic facility, the multi-sport facility. Question had come up of if we move the senior center to the North Base, how will that affect the Y? We said we are 100% in support of a senior center. The only thing we won't be in support of, quite frankly, is we won't be in support of Norman building a senior YMCA, which is basically what the. which is basically what the city of Oklahoma City did when they built their health facilities. Now, do I believe that the seniors need access to quality, healthy living things like fitness centers and swimming pools and that sort of stuff? Absolutely, I do. And we have that built, and it is in place. So I'm not opposed to what the seniors are doing. We have affordable opportunities for all seniors. And I see some of you that don't necessarily agree with what I'm saying. There are great opportunities for you. But if you do decide to build that, we want to be a partner with you as well to help you manage what you build. We have, you know, 2,500 locations around the United States of America right now. So I think we kind of know what we're doing. But it is your Y. And I don't ever want to, you know, step on toes. We're trying to be a good partner here. We're trying not to get caught in the political aspect of it and to stay neutral, to say that whatever you build, we feel like we have a great asset and that we have the resources behind us to be able to be great operators of it and partner with this community in providing those facilities.
And that includes the aquatics center?
Mr. Paisley, does that include being interested in managing the indoor aquatic facility and the multi-sport facility if they are in the UNP as opposed to next door to the Y?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we are very much interested in continuing partnering. We can't not on the same page, sort of. We say just tell us where it's going to be and where you want to build it, and we'll figure out the details. Yes, it might take a little more operationally. You know, we had originally said we needed the gym built a fair number of months in advance of the swimming pool because the gymnasium has the capacity to produce a little more revenue than the swimming pool is going to produce on the upfront to help subsidize the loss that the swimming pool will bring in operations. And that's just, those are the facts. Those are, you know, everybody we talk to. We know that aquatic centers are very expensive to operate, but that's a fair expectation. Gymnasiums are a little less expensive to operate, so there's a little more profit margin there. So when, you know, we're a nonprofit charitable organization. We're not trying to make a profit, but the Y will not be. And I've got our board chair here, James Aiken. And James, as a chairman of our board, will tell you the Y will not be in a position to subsidize any of these projects in Norman because that's not, you know, we are charity, not a subsidizer of tax-funded operations. But every person has access to the Y. We have scholarships available for anybody and everybody that needs them. We do it with dignity and respect. So, you know, we feel like we're an important part of the community, and we appreciate the support we've always received from City Hall, from other community groups, and we just appreciate it.
Any other comments from... yes?
Scott Martin, Norman Chamber of Commerce, Mayor and Council. First, thank you for giving everybody the opportunity to come together and talk about this. I think it's admirable when a proposal like this has happened that we as a community get to weigh in. So this is nice. The chamber has only recently learned of this proposal. But in a greater sense, our members want to be supportive of your efforts to increase your sales tax base, plug holes that you have, deficiencies that you have, whether it be your general fund, Norman Forward projects, whatever the case may be. And you look at the dynamics that moving the multi-sports facility and indoor aquatics facility to University North Park compared to North Base, there's really no comparison. I'm sure many of you, whether as a parent or as an athlete, you might have traveled to a tournament or something like that, and you spent maybe an overnight, a day there. And in between games and tournaments and things, you go out, you eat, you shop. And that's what my members want. We want the opportunity for our citizens that are currently here today, but also visitors that are going to be coming into town, for them to frequent their business. And clearly, a dynamic development right off of I-35 in an area that's already teed up, ready to go, makes a ton more sense for those two facilities. Clearly understand the senior center, and we desperately need to find the appropriate place for them to be. But for these two facilities, I think it makes the most sense to have them where it's accessible. Not only do you have restaurants and stores, you already have hotels that are there for overnight guests that would come for tournaments. But this would be, I think, a huge economic boom for your budget and our community as a whole, and particularly my members, the businesses that might be serving our citizens and our guests. So in general, we would be very supportive of the move and the synergy that can come out of that that won't happen right now at North Base.
Yes, Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, I just want to ask a question, I guess, because this took a different sort of, I wasn't expecting sort of to put two places or two of the facilities in the University North Park and then the senior center in either North Base or elsewhere. And so I'm wondering about what that would look like, the cost of that, the total, you know, cost of that, if it is going to bring some sort of economic boom to the UNP area, you know, projections on what that would look like as well. Again, traffic, because I agree with my constituent Julie and the chair of the seniors. Robinson and 24th is problematic for a number of reasons. That whole intersection there is, and this is an issue we are having with the arena discussion. This is really a concern with the traffic in the area. And if, you know, this is bringing, you know, out of state or out of city people to the town to stay, can we accommodate them in that area? And so, and what do we all feel like about having these two places split? I mean, are we going to allow these two facilities to be in the University North Park? And then what about the senior center? Are we not going to spend that money on the land swap? And where else would we put it? I'm just, I have so many questions now, more than I had when I came here. I guess, and that's, I'm just putting it out there. Whoever has the answers to those.
Well, just out talking with some folks outside. Out talking with some folks outside, another option for the senior center, and I don't want to speak for them. Again, I think they need the right place where they want to go, and that's of paramount importance to them. But another option for the senior center is land at Reeves Park that's not going to cost any money. And again, I don't want to say that we have to cram them in there. But I think the best option right now is to put the two kind of economic impact and concern with bringing people in from out of state, holding events, things like that, helping pay for some of Norman Forward. Right now, it seems like, again, the emerging consensus is is these two kind of economic impact sport-type facilities up at UNP where there's more land, less cost, more of an economic draw for people coming in from outside, and let the senior center go where they want to go, and don't use North Base at all for this $2.4 million land transaction and half a million dollar or more demolition of the hangar. You open up some more options that way.
Okay, let me also, just based on what you said, kind of put something else out there about all of this. If, you know, like you said, we want to put the two... So the multi-sport facility and the aquatic center kind of caters to the youth and the young people. And then we're talking about then isolating... This is supposed to be a cross-generational sort of idea, multi-generational idea, and putting them all together so that they can interact. There's a sort of economy that we're not talking about, and it's a social economy. Like, we have a community here in Norman, and it's not just the, you know, the seniors, and it's not just college students. It's supposed to be some sort of, it should be cross-generational. And I do have concerns about totally isolating them from each other from just a sort of, I guess, love-everybody sort of standpoint. You know, I want the, I want interaction between the seniors and between young people. I don't want to, you know, isolate the seniors on the south side of town. And I don't even know about cart services down there, if, how that's going to look as well, or public transportation getting through the UNP. I just have so many questions.
I don't think the expectation of this evening was that...
I know, but I'm just like more concerned than I was before.
I understand that. Do know that we've been through all this for the last four years, and all three projects were not even talked about being together until last year. So, I mean, this is just another iteration. And what, right now, we just want to hear whether or not there is an interest in this land because we're wanting, we've directed our legal staff to negotiate us out of the TIF. So this is a piece of it. So we need to know. Are we going to make a decision to look at that land? Or are we going to just say, well, we haven't decided everything, and we can't do that? So the purpose of this was really just to get input about was there interest?
Well, and it certainly sounds like there is interest and different interests at play right now. And I think we had a hand in the back, so, from an economist. Sure.
Hi, Cindy Rogers. I will note, I'm not the only economist in the room tonight, so yay. I'm also on the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board. I think it's not, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself. But it's absolutely not true that we have an informed council about concerns of the Norman Forward budget. So I'll just lay that out there, and I'll resend you guys the note we sent you not so long ago. So I have some concerns. And the idea that this is being wrapped up with the negotiations for getting out of the TIF, you know, when you go to the car dealer and you say, "I want to buy that car," you know how crappy of a deal you get? So I think you can't really negotiate out of the TIF until you know what the details are of... And you can't decide if UNP area land is going to be better than North Base unless you know what the details of the offer is. So I would discourage you for making, settling on one place or the other without being able to do what Mr. Hickman suggested, the apples-to-apples comparison, which you can't do until you know what the deal is. You don't say, "We'll negotiate this later and figure it out." You absolutely have to know those details first. The other caution I would say, and speaking as an economist, the idea of sports tourism. You can, there's another economist in the room, so you can ask him if he wants to confirm or deny this. Putting you on the spot. But the Norman Forward stuff is supposed to be about quality of life for our citizens, right? This isn't about the regional draw types of stuff. That was supposed to be the Lifestyle Center. So I would caution all of us into getting excited about that aspect. Sports tourism is not really a money-making gig. At best, it could help offset the cost of some operations and maintenance sorts of things. But Norman Forward is about quality of life and programs and facilities for our citizens to use. And if you put that criteria ahead of the idea that we could, you know, spend some extra business to certain retailers, then I think that lets us think about different locations that are optimal, like where to put the seniors or where a pool would be convenient to have or a multi-sport gym. So I guess I'm building off of Councilperson Scott's comments about the social capital aspects and the mission of what Norman Forward is about.
Okay, our idea was to put multi-generational together. That was the idea originally. That's what we talked about. What I'm hearing the seniors say is they don't want to be part... I just heard, I just heard Dave Beck say that they didn't want to be an event center place. They wanted to have their own place. So I'm just saying what I heard, what I thought I understood the seniors to say.
I can clarify that a little bit. I really encourage you to capture our time.
Okay, you've got to talk into the mic because we're on TV. I'm sorry. Why don't you say what you're going to, and then we'll pass it over to her.
Thank you. Alva Brockus, I am a swim parent. I sit on the board for SSC. I'll answer Ms. Scott's question. I think you formed it in the question. Swimming is a multi-generational sport. Swimmers are birth to death, as far as I know. It is a non-impact sport. Every single day at OU, while my kids are swimming, there are seniors in the deep pool exercising. So you're not losing your multi-generational thing by letting the seniors do what the seniors need to do and by letting us get something built before there is no swimming in Norman. As far as something for the community and something for the economics, this is a community thing. This is a pool that will serve the whole community. The nice added benefit is there is an economic piece there. I go to minimum six swim meets a year in Edmund. I spend $150 for each of those swim meets in Edmund. That's just to pay for my kids to swim. On the way home, because they're starving, I stop at a fast food restaurant, and I buy them food. The only pool of that dimension in the Oklahoma City metro area is in Edmund. Aside from the community benefit, which is large, we have a master's swimming group in Norman. We have our team that swims in Norman. We have state championship high school swimmers in Norman. We have potential Olympic people. Yeah, we're paying OU for the pool, an awful lot to OU for the pool. And when it goes for two weeks and it's broken, we still have to pay for it. The Y has been very kind to rent to us so that our kids can keep swimming because invariably, the breakage happens right before state. But my point is, this is a community facility. I know some aspects of the Senior Wellness Center have some things they need out of the pool in that facility. But this pool is not just for competitive sports. It's not just so that we can bring in outside meets. There are parts of the day that it would serve all of that. But there are whole other stretches of the day when it can serve homeschoolers who need swim lessons and seniors who swim recreationally or seniors who swim competitively. So this is a multi-generational facility as far as the aquatic center is concerned.
Comments? I'm not a swimmer. My husband is a lifeguard. He's been a lifeguard for like a decade or something. He is an adamant swimmer. I try to stay out of the water as often as possible. And so I really do appreciate your comments. And I'm also wondering what your name is, if you could state that for me?
I'm sorry, I thought I said that earlier. My name is Alva Brockus. I'm in Ward 2.
Okay. Alva Brockus, okay, cool. Thank you.
That was a great point that I think most of us weren't even thinking about.
Well, just one. We have, you have a plan on getting the land between Flood and the Y. But what if the other two move on to the TIF area and leave us there? Can you renegotiate how much it's going to cost? And can you renegotiate and just get one little piece of land to put the seniors on?
I suppose we, what, somebody, Catherine?
I actually talked to OU about that today after receiving Julie's email. And that is something they would be open to. Obviously, we need to identify how much we would need if it was just a senior center, and the price could be adjusted accordingly.
Hi, Julie, again. Alex, I wanted to address your concern. Even if we end up southeast in Stevens area, wherever we end up, we have programs that we would like to have in place that have us connected with Norman Public Schools and still working with. We have a conference on the 15th of March to start talking about what all we want. And so we encourage our community to come and talk about what you want your seniors to be. Minnesota has this program, and I talk about this quite often, where it's required of their senior wellness centers, for their seniors, or a certain percentage of their seniors, to be active in their public schools, to adopt a classroom for the academic year. They go in, it may just be listening to first graders learn how to read, or it may be a retired chemistry professor... or it may be a retired chemistry professor helping out in a high school chem class. But they spend a couple hours a week, every week for the academic year, involved with students. Things like that. So, we do want to keep some aspects of young and old together, obviously. That works for us too. Being around kids helps keep you young regardless. Being around kids all day long makes your hair white. Yeah, so, I mean, we will still want to do things with the community and with youth.
Councilmember Holman?
My, I guess my thoughts on this, since we haven't really known about this whole proposal very long. So, the, the idea of the indoor aquatic center and the multi-sport facility being in the UMP area definitely makes a lot of sense to me for many of the reasons that have been mentioned by people here tonight. What I'm struggling with here is that in my time on council and the last several years that we've been working on Norman Forward, it seems like we, every time we think we've got this issue solved and figured out, some curveball comes out of nowhere. It's not necessarily bad because it can be, it's a good, better idea maybe. And maybe we'll get something better in the long run from it, but.
We don't get very many more.
I agree. What I'm struggling with here is I've really liked the idea of the senior center being able to co-mingle with some entity since the first time I heard about it, which was the, you know, senior, the request that the new senior center be located near the new library so that there could be intermingling there. That really made a lot of sense to me. I really like that idea a lot. And that's why, or one of the main reasons I have supported the standalone idea since, since it was brought to us. We, you know, we're pretty unsuccessful at trying to find a suitable location in this area of town to be next to the new library for the senior center. And so, we were able to, thanks to other, you know, some ideas that some other council members came up with last year, we were able to, you know, the idea of putting the senior center up with these other facilities, you know, youth sports and things like that, that would give senior citizens, maybe it's not the library, but it's another opportunity where there could be cross-mingling and things like that. At Reeves Park even, you know, it seems like it's really isolated, but Reeves Park is going to be the youth softball and baseball complex for the city of Norman. And it's, you know, right, kind of in the middle of the university. So, you have lots of students, you have lots of opportunities where there could be some, some activities between groups, even if it's down in Reeves Park. So, there's several options where I think we can get there. I don't think that if we put the aquatic center and the indoor multi-sport facility in the UMP TIF, I don't, I don't think we should put the senior center in North Base if we do that because then it would kind of be, it would be near the Y, and maybe that could be, there could be some good things there. But they would be by themselves really. And at that point, I would really prefer that we either look at Reeves Park or we look at, go back to looking at Andrews Park in the central area again. Again, though, that gives me heartburn because then we're still not, we're still looking at locations. We're still not making a decision on where we're going to put the senior center. So, we're still leaving that in limbo, which is concerning to me as well. So, also, I, I want to make sure that we are going to end the tax increment diversion by June 30th. And so, if we were to substitute the cultural facility with these projects, which I think could be a good idea, then, you know, we're going to have to cut other costs, and we've talked about that before. And, and that would be necessary to make sure that this isn't a way to keep the increment going longer than June 30th. So, there's a lot for us to think about here. And as Councilmember Scott mentioned, you know, she maybe is less clear than she was before we got here. So, and maybe that's the case for many of us. But we've got some big decisions. I'm kind of looking at, as we have some big opportunities here, that we could really have something great if we get this right. And so, I'm just, I'm glad that we all got to get together here tonight and talk about this because, you know, getting the information about this just a week or two ago and then thinking, well, okay, we've just got this land deal finally approved by the regents after a year of delay, basically. And we've got everybody excited that we think we've got this figured out. And now, well, here's this other idea, and maybe it's better. So, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to figure this out and, and maybe there's some other comments and questions. Thank you.
Alex is waiting too. Okay, we'll let Alex go, then we have somebody in the audience, and then we'll come back to.
Okay, so, yes, just so you guys know, I'm really cut and dry, like I need things real plain and simple so I know where we're moving going forward. And so, I hear all this conversation and I absorb it. And I just want to reiterate kind of what I've heard tonight so that I know what direction that we're moving in. And what I'm hearing is that the Aquatic Center and the multi-sport facility doesn't mind being in the UMP. Actually, they would be, they're totally okay with it. And we think that there are several benefits to that, including maybe coming to an agreement with our partners as far as ending the TIF increment and by June. And then also, our seniors are, and the thing I'm hearing the most is that time is of the essence. This is, this is the most critical thing I think I've heard tonight from both the Senior Association as well as the, the Aquatic Center. And then maybe the, I don't know if the time is so crucial with the multi-sport facility. But that's what I'm hearing is that this needs to happen within the year. We have a timeline, and we're worried about how changes are going to affect the timeline. I'm personally worried about how it's going to affect our budget. And so, what these infrastructure costs mean in each, in each section. And I'm interested to see what that looks like. And I don't want to delay anything any further on, on the sense of the time, you know? I want to make sure that we get an aquatic facility that is above par for the people who are using it. And then also, a senior, a state-of-the-art senior center for our seniors. And I would like to have cross-generational art sessions, just throwing that out there. Some ceramics classes at the Senior Association. And then, but yeah, that's what I'm hearing, is the, the timing is the most critical part of this. The location is, we're okay with the University North Park locations, whether that's the NEDC land or that's the UTC. We've had less discussion on that. I guess it, I don't know if you guys are partial, it's give or take, whatever costs less, I guess. Okay, I'm here, I'm seeing a lot of this out there. So, I'm just making sure, I want to make sure I'm on the right track. And if there's anything I'm missing, please set me straight, set all of us straight. Yes, sir?
What I would add is, I think you got it correct.
Oh, okay, and we've got some other.
I'm just pointing out.
We've got some other people waiting.
Well, he was the multi-cult, or multi-sport guy. So, I was like.
All right, all right. How about we come back then? Can we do that? All right. And then we have somebody down here as well.
Bill Wilson, TIF Oversight. Catherine, if, there she is. If we build Aquatic Center, Sports Center, can it be considered a Lifestyle Center? And if so, will the developers then provide the $8 million without extending the TIF?
The Lifestyle Center that's mentioned in the project plan for University North Park is described as a retail regional draw. In fact, in the Amendment One to Development Agreement Number Five, we adopted some criteria for stores to qualify for the required square footage in the Lifestyle Center based on sales per square foot. So, I don't think, as written now, that these projects would qualify for those funds.
That's what, that's what Nina, thank you.
I can put, oh, I'm sorry, Donna Johnson, founding member of the Norman Seniors Association, Ward Five. Is that it? Okay. I can put your minds at ease about this intergenerational thing. I am a member of the Norman Seniors Association, but I'm not speaking for the association right now. This is my opinion. You don't need to construct faults and artificial ways that we can connect with young people. We're pretty smart. We made it all this way on our own. And I, we have lots and lots of programs in mind for how we would choose to interact with people of all ages. And I think you should leave that up to us as to how we do it. We will find ways to bring value from our experience to all different ages in Norman. And we don't need to be parked somewhere so that maybe some little teenage jocks can come and visit us. I know that says hateful. I don't mean it in a hateful way. I'm really happy that we're getting all these Norman Forward things. But you don't need to do this for us. We can do it on our own. Thank you.
This is Mary Francis at 850 C Cardinal Creek Condos. Every Monday, I visit five classrooms of first graders and kindergartners. There are other seniors who are actually totally involved with other generations. Donna hit it right on the head. We're already there.
Okay, I've got some count, oh, wait a minute. Now, we were going to come back over here, and then we're going to do the council. And then I think we need to start winding up here. We're, we're getting close to, over here. Mr. Norman?
I just had a quick question for the council. The seniors have an ad hoc committee. I've been waiting for four years to sit on an Aquatic Center ad hoc committee. We, the swim community, have a lot of professionals who are willing to put energy into researching some of the questions the council may have regarding costs, regarding needs, regarding what will work. But we need the council to appoint a committee so that we can do that.
Yes, ma'am. And I have had on my desk three different times over the last 12 months, names of possible people to appoint, and every time, the cheese has moved again. So, I am hoping that we will be able to do this. We wanted to make sure we had a place before, and we have had a task force going.
If we can appoint a senior ad hoc committee without a place, couldn't you appoint an Aquatic Center ad hoc committee?
Great point, great point.
Well, now that gives me something else to say. I absolutely ditto that for the multi-sport indoor facility. Same reasons, let's get the Y, let's get the Optimist Club people, let's get, let's get the city junior jammers, those folks involved, the churches and those folks involved, and letting the experts figure this out. The one thing I was actually going to say is, one of the critical reasons we're coming down in favor of North Park is not only the lack of downtime, they're related, but we believe that moving to University North Park is going to allow these two projects to be completed much more quickly than at North Base because there's not so much to do in advance at North Park as there is at North Base.
Okay, now, we're back to Councilmember Hickman, and then, Councilmember. You were not afraid, you were not in front of.
Okay, so, I totally agree. I also think that we should go forward with appointing the ad hoc committees. And I think I've told some of y'all with the swim club that specifically. So, I support that, and I'm happy to support the mayor anyway in making that happen. I want to build off what Mr. Norman said. One of the concerns I have in the limited time I've been on council, one of the things that seems to be an inevitable truth is that just when you think something's the quickest pathway there, it's oftentimes not. And so, I'm cautious because I feel like we have done a lot more work and vetting of the North Base property and have the land contract signed with OU. You saw that we have project costs a lot more specified for the North Base area because we've been working on that area. And it was a part of the original Norman Forward estimates and estimates of the roads that had to be built and the work that had to be done. I just worry that we start peeling back the onion in the North Park area. We already know that there's going to have to be lines possibly run from what's, they're not already in place. We don't know what those costs might be. It's going to have to be platted, it sounds like. We don't know if there's any issues there. And not to mention, we don't know what the roadwork's going to be because we don't know what the access, access points are going to be right now. It's through a parking lot. So, there are a lot of unanswered questions that I, I just, I throw that out there just, I think everybody needs to be realistic. You know, that we don't know the answers to a lot of questions that make it a, not an apple-to-apple comparison of what the cost might be, but also what the problems might end up being of getting access to that, the, the University North Park lot off of either Rock Creek or 24th, how that's going to work and what that's going to look like and what those costs are going to be, and how, and what it's going to take to run the infrastructure in place. And I'll say on top of that, that whole process is embedded, as you've heard tonight, in a settlement negotiation. I think this council, majority of them, are pretty committed to ending the increment collection. That means ending the TIF. That's in part how this discussion came up with the representatives of the developer, was as a part of trying to come up with a global solution to the TIF. If that fails, you know, there's the possibility that we could end up in litigation. We end up in litigation with the developers, you know, this money, the culture facility money, the development of these projects could be on hold for, you know, a year or two, I don't know, while the rest of that money is collected. So, you know, putting my lawyer hat on, you know, that's my day job, you know, things can always come up that you don't foresee that can make some, an, one idea that's not been vetted. When you start working through those issues, you run into other problems. And in this instance, with the North Park area, we have somebody that we have to work with that is not, not that it's antagonistic, but it is a settlement negotiation of avoiding a lawsuit. So, I would necessarily say it's a kumbaya partnership. And so, I think we have to be aware of that as we move forward because, you know, that may or may not get worked out. And this council may or may not decide to end the TIF early, which may or may not be what triggers a potential lawsuit. And so, there are a lot of moving parts here. And the ending of that TIF early is very important, many people would say, to the city's budget and balancing the city's budget from a fiscal standpoint to ensure that we are viable, continue to be viable and providing the services that our community is used to because we're not that far away from being in the negative of our city's budget. And so, I just wanted to share that because I do think that that has gotten a little bit lost in some of the conversation, that there are a lot of unanswered questions about the North Park area. Don't get me wrong, I coached my daughter's soccer team for 20 seasons between my two daughters. I've traveled to Tulsa, Mustang, Yukon, Enid, Lawton, to, you know, for a recreational team to compete in recreational tournaments. And we stayed in hotels and, you know, had, you know, made some, made some great friends. And so, I totally get the idea of the youth sports and, and having them over there by the NBC Suites and all the potential upside benefits of that from a larger general standpoint. But I also, you know, have seen the, over the few years I've been on council, that there's always things that come up. And I feel like, while there are issues maybe with the asbestos still, we have done more vetting and more preparation on the North Base property than we have the North Park property. The North Park property may all work out and be totally smooth. And it would be the first time, I think, that, that that's happened since I've been on council on these Norman Forward projects and the senior center. Right now, I don't see any significant bump in the road left on the North Base property because I think we're going to get the land, I mean, but I could be wrong. We might find buried armaments and buried planes and, and gas tanks in the North Base property as we're out there doing our due diligence and realize, oh, that property can't be built on. So, there's always risk. I don't think that's going to happen because of the work that's already been, being done. But I just wanted to share that because I do think that people have to understand that ultimately, this discussion and negotiation, this discussion about the North Park property is a part of a larger settlement negotiation with the developers. And anytime that you're negotiating, we don't know how that's going to go. And that very well could be that that deal is not resolved until into the summer, June or July, as we've talked about trying to end the collection by June or July. And I suspect that until that deal is resolved, we won't be moving forward very much on implementing these Norman Forward projects on that property until we get a deal inked. At least, I think that would be taking on risk that I'm not sure we should since it's a part of a global negotiation. So, I just wanted to put that out there for, I think that's, everybody needs to be aware of the greater dynamics here that are going on.
Just point out, I, I don't think we're giving up the North Base land as yet because, as you said, we're in a negotiation. We're talking about another opportunity that's been offered to us. That's what we have to decide.
That's what we have to decide. Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. And so one of the things I want to really focus on tonight is the fact that we are so early in an information development and we have all of you guys here in the room to help us make these decisions. So I want to say thank you for coming because for myself, the minute I heard that this was a development, I thought, oh my gosh, there's, there's several groups at play here and I don't really know what they would want. So that's what I wanted to hear is what do you want? Now, I know you're cool, you guys are good, y'all are fine, we can find a location for you, you guys are good. So now I can go forward with the things that Catherine will bring in and the, the legal things and all of the roads and environmental stuff. And I know that I can make confident steps towards what the citizens that are going to be the stakeholders in this want. So also, I think that it was really cool that this whole council body wanted to hear from you together. Nobody was, there was no shell games or shenanigans. This was us coming together saying, no, no, we can't take one more step without talking to our community partners. So that having been said, I have a few things that I'm concerned about. Sports as a regional draw concerns me that we have a, we push out citizens that might use the facility. So I would just caution you guys that, that we would want to make sure that it's a community facility, no matter what the decision is, but I think you guys have that. Also, I was a sports mom that traveled lots of places and was thinking, well, why don't we do this here in Norman? We're a big city. Why can't we, you know, have these, these things, these tournaments and what have you? Mine was baseball and then football. But anyways, so thank, I just want to say thank you for coming and thank you guys for giving us such great feedback. I feel like I can make better decisions now.
Let's see, Councilmember Beerman and then Clark.
Hey, Judd, I've got a quick question for you. Maybe it's a hypothetical, but it could turn into a reality. What would we see in terms of a change in timeline? As, I mean, as you know, as you, I can't conjure the image of the timeline for the North Base property off the top of my head, but things were going to be starting to move pretty quickly come April with ad hoc committees and firm selection and design. And that's what got us to, is it fall 2021 for the opening of the senior center? So if we were to scrap this land, decide that we were going to go with the UNP land, regardless of which site, what would we be looking at now in terms of a timeline? How many, how many months would this be pushed back? Or pushed up, could be?
I'm not sure I can answer that. The, I defer to Catherine a little bit more than me, but, but my understanding is the UNP site could probably be available sooner because of the due diligence that's required. You've already heard these comments several times tonight, required at North Base. And then the, all of the other effort that has to go into that project and the cost. But, but that's not your question. The question's about time. It seems to me like it would be quicker to go to the UNP site and not cause any further delay.
Good, I appreciate that.
That's my, I guess it depends on the negotiation process and how long it takes to finish that, to, to get that done. And I don't, I couldn't comment on that.
But would we, would we go ahead and select a firm without having the site finalized? Or would we have to wait till those negotiations?
We have been ready to issue invitations to the shortlist of firms and have intentionally waited till we have a site. We didn't think it made much sense to get a firm started when we don't know where it's going to go. We're ready to start that process whenever we identify the site.
Okay. So, I mean, at least it sounds like at least this early phase, the negotiating the land and the firm might, would obviously be pushed back a little bit because we could, we could pull the trigger on pushing out a firm for the North Base land right now if we wanted to while we do.
We could if we knew we were going to go there. But I wouldn't want to, our, our point, the point was, we didn't want to get anybody started to look at it or spend time and money on it and then not use it.
Right. Makes sense.
So.
Thanks.
Sure.
Catherine, do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, do you have anything to add?
Sure, I can. The closing on the property for North Base, and I think I said this earlier, but I'm not sure now, is scheduled to occur at, the timeline in the MOU was three to six months to give us time to do that due diligence. So that would probably be midsummer. And if we're tracking to that June 30 date that, that we're shooting for on the MOU and, and the agreements to kind of wrap these outstanding issues up, then I think the timeline for the actual acquisition would be pretty similar. I think then it's just a matter of, as Judd said, what sort of steps you need next, infrastructure, environmental demolition, you know, depending on which site you choose, what would be required after that.
Thanks. And so kind of my, I have like three pages of notes and what, page and a half of those are thoughts and things I want to kind of flesh out more fully. Because I want to reiterate what Councilmember Wilson said, which is that I do feel like I can make better decisions now that I've heard from all of the stakeholder groups. You know, it's hard to kind of get that feedback without this kind of a setting. So I appreciate that. One of the things that I've just been kind of kicking around in my head is that if we do decide to move the multi-sport facility and the indoor aquatic center to UNP and we start to look at maybe Reeves Park for a senior center location, I'm not entirely sure why we need the cultural facility funds for that. You know, according to, according to Anthony, who is not here to answer the question, I would have asked of him if he were here, is that, you know, as he believes that these projects can come in at budget, maybe over budget, depending on what the Aquatic Center Ad hoc Committee comes up with. And if we use the Reeves Park site for the senior center, then we have the savings from the Griffin Land acquisition that we can use for that. Might be a little bit that we need to, that we need to find, but there's no reason to use the cultural facility funds. And then we are just one step closer to ending the TIF early. We don't use those funds, as Councilmember Hickman said, that is 8.75 million less of a gap to close. So just something to keep in mind. We have those negotiations that we're going through and continuing to use these funds definitely makes it more difficult for us to do our jobs and find the funds to end the TIF and close the gap with the obligations that the developers seem to feel we have to comply with. So just something to consider. I'm not entirely sure that without all three facilities, it'll be considered the cultural facility designation that will be needed to use those funds. If a senior center by itself is not a cultural facility, I'm not entirely sure that an indoor aquatic center and a multi-sport facility would be considered a cultural facility. So that's just something for us to consider as we continue with these negotiations as to whether or not we still need to use those funds since Norman Forward funds were intended to pay for these facilities. And if they can, then I think they should be.
Okay. Councilmember Clark.
I'm going to keep this brief because my goal tonight was to get comments from all of you, not another opportunity for you to listen to us talk. So thank you all for coming. I appreciated Councilmember Scott's kind of summary of, of what she understood to be happening. Councilwoman Wilson, I liked your comments as well. And Mayor Miller, thank you for organizing this event. I think it was the right thing to do when you get a proposal like that, that's kind of out of left field. We need to talk to the people that are affected by it, not just make assumptions. And Councilwoman Beerman and Councilwoman Hickman, I appreciate your caution and we can certainly discuss that more, but I think we got the input that we needed tonight. So thank you all for coming. That's not ending the meeting, just thank you for coming.
It's pretty close. Okay. Any more, any more comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. I'm also going to keep my comments closed or short, closed, short. I appreciate everybody for coming. I appreciate you have made some really good comments and it has been helpful to us. We still have lots more to do. We don't have an MOU yet. That is the details that some of the people in the audience have been talking about. We want to get that done as quickly as possible. This has weighed very heavily on me, the fact that you all have been out there waiting and waiting and waiting. And, and every time we thought we were there, something happened. Councilmember Holman said it very well. And it's been very frustrating for you all. It's been frustrating for us and other people in the community. So I'm really hoping that we're close to an answer here and that we will know very soon. We've heard that both of these pieces of property would have a similar timeline in terms of actually getting ownership of those properties. And I understand that, that what needs to be done at the North Base would take quite a bit longer. So we'll keep all that in mind. We really appreciate it. I, I will get on to appointing the committee and for the sport center and for the aquatic center. And with that, I move that we adjourn. Thank you all very much for coming.